Good evening, folks. We're going to go ahead and reconvene into our regular session at 18:10. The report that we have out of closed session includes the board appointed William Gray, Executive Director of Educational Services effective July 31, 2023. The motion was brought forward by Ms. Leandra Blades, seconded by Marilyn Anderson, and carried 5-0. We also took a vote on Ms. Kylie Fin- I'm going to butcher this again. Fenema, thank you. Elementary School Principal effective August 9, 2023. The motion was brought forward by Todd Frazier, seconded by Leandra Blades. Motion carried 5-0. Next, the board took action to appoint Maria Verga, Elementary School Principal effective August 9, 2023. It was brought forward by Ms. Carrie Buck, seconded by Leandra Blades, and the motion carried 5-0. The board also appointed Ms. Tricia Gray, Elementary School Principal effective August 9, 2023, brought forward by Ms. Carrie Buck, seconded by Todd Frazier. The motion carried 5-0. The board also appointed Ms. Paula Sushlin, High School Assistant Principal effective August 7. Motion was brought forward by Ms. Leandra Blades, seconded by Ms. Carrie Buck, and it carried 5-0. Next, the board took action to appoint Kristi Kunin, Elementary School Assistant Principal effective August 9, 2023. Motion was brought forward by Todd Frazier, seconded by Leandra Blades, and the motion carried 5-0. Next, the board took action to appoint Nancy Blade, Executive Director of Human Resources, effective August 9, 2023. This was brought forward by Trustee Blades, seconded by Trustee Anderson, and the motion carried 5-0. Okay. Also, the board took action to appoint Brad Runge, Executive Director of Maintenance and Facilities, effective August 9, 2023. Motion was brought forward by Trustee Frazier, seconded by Trustee Anderson, and carried 5-0. And last but not least, the board took action to appoint Ally Lloyd, Assistant Principal at Eldorado High School. This motion was brought forward by Trustee Anderson, seconded by Trustee Blades, and it carried 5-0. Awesome. Thank you. Okay. So, at this point, let's go ahead and have Mr. Frazier do our Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right. So, let's go ahead and document that all of our board members are present with the exclusion of our student board member. So, I need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the August 8, 2023 Board of Education Agenda.
Timeout. Timeout, one sec.
I do. President Youngblood, I ask the consent counter item 21.51, which includes agreement of the OCDE and the District for Professional Development be pulled and the agenda amended. Staff found an amended contract covering the funding for this item had been board approved at the November 15, 2022 meeting. Given that the amended contract was previously approved, there's no need for this item on tonight's agenda. And that's 21.51 on consent.
Excellent. Thank you, Dr. Churnus. Okay. So, I need a motion for the amended agenda, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the August 8, 2023 Board of Education Agenda as amended, as recommended by the superintendent.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion carries, okay. Any comments? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. Thank you. Okay, folks, this is the public comment announcement. Public comment cards are available in the foyer. Cards must be completed and turned in prior to the designated time for public comment. There is provided a maximum time of three minutes per person. If translation is needed, an additional three minutes will be given. Please let us know ahead of time so we can ensure that we are prepared. We do have a civility policy. Education Code 20 or 220 prohibits discrimination on the basis of disability, gender, gender identity, gender expression, nationality, race, or ethnicity, religion, sexual orientation, or any other characteristics that are contained in the definition of hate crime set forth by Section 422.55 of the Penal Code, including immigration status. Okay. I will need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular board meeting.
I'll second.
June 20, 2023.
Excellent. Motion by Todd Frazier, Marilyn Anderson, seconded. Any comments? Comments regarding?
No.
Okay. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. At this time, I'd like to have the superintendent's report. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Churnus.
All right. Good evening again, President Youngblood, trustees, executive cabinet members, and members of the public. This was an exciting first week. And so, yesterday, we welcomed back to all of our principals, our assistant principals, and our new district administrative team. We had a great professional development training yesterday as we're beginning to plan for the new year, which starts Tuesday, August 29. So, for all the students out there, you still have a lot more time than most schools as my children start on Monday, and they're not too happy about that. As we do look ahead, the theme of 2324 school year is Together Towards Tomorrow, which serves to remind us of the many possibilities next year will hold. And we're starting some really amazing programs we're very excited about. In particular, we're really excited about the State of the District event, and this will come up at our annual leadership symposium for all of our district managers, trustees, and local officials this Thursday at the PAC at Eldorado High School. Really looking forward to talking to our leadership team and community leaders about what we're going to be doing this year and beyond. And so, that'll be a great event. We haven't had a State of the District event, as I understand, in a long time, so this will be something that will be the whole community can get behind. At this time, I'd like to introduce some of our new district leaders, some of which have been announced and approved, and some are going to be approved in the very near future at this meeting. One of those being our new Assistant Superintendent of Administrative Services, Mr. Gary Stein. And before I ask Mr. Stein to come up, and we're really excited to have you here, I want to thank David Giordano for his service to the district. This is your last board meeting. I know you're really, really going to miss us here and miss coming to board meetings. But, you know, in my short time, I've really enjoyed working with you, and on behalf of all the students in this district and all the people that have been, you know, working with you, we thank you for your service. And we know you're not going too far away, so we will definitely stay in touch. So, at this time, Gary Stein is joining us. He's, he was serving as the Executive Director of Support Services for the Orange County Department of Education for the last 18 years. And we were lucky enough to pull him out of there. Before that, he was a Director of IT. He worked three years in a local school district, and he served some time in the private industry, also in software development and in IT. He received his Master's in Public Administration from University of Illinois, his Bachelor's in Computer Information Systems from DeVry University Pomona. He interviewed with members of executive cabinet several times. He's met with me, and he's been really highly recommended by a lot of people that I respect and trust. So, he's going to start with us the end of August. It'll have about a week overlap with Mr. Giordano, which we're thankful for, and we can't wait to have you on our team. And while your contract is still, you know, down the line on the agenda, I'd love for you to come up and say a few words, and I understand your wife's here as well. So, thank you also. Welcome to PYL. And Gary, come on up.
Thank you very much. With the overlap, I think we're going to have to arm wrestle to figure out who gets the desk in the office, but it should be fun. So, good evening, President Youngblood, Board of Trustees, members of executive cabinet. It's an honor for me to be here, especially having my wife here. This is her first board meeting she's ever attended, so hopefully it'll go smoothly. First, that's a nervous laugh. It's really an honor to be here, and I want to thank you for this opportunity to work for this great district and for this great community. It's evident how involved the community is, and ever since I've started, I've been working at the county for a long time, as Dr. Churnus pointed out. And so, I'm well aware of how involved the community is and how much support this community has or gives to the school district, and it means a lot. And I look forward to being a part of that and to work together to help continue that tradition of excellence that is here at PYL. And so, I just want to say thank you to, after the announcement came out Thursday, there was an overwhelming response of encouragement and congratulations. I wanted to say thank you for that, and I look forward to being part of this team. Thank you very much.
And next, our new Executive Director of Secondary Education, Dr. William Gray. Dr. Gray came to us from Magnolia Public Schools, where he was serving as Director of Ed Services. Throughout his career in public education, he's held several other positions, including Coordinator of College Career Readiness, High School Principal, Assistant Principal at the middle school and high school levels, Academic Dean, Department Chair, History Teacher in Los Angeles and Orange Counties. His most recent role allowed him to increase teacher collaboration and data use to improve instruction across schools, provide leadership for effective college and career readiness, and create new alumni success positions to increase college persistence for at-promised graduates. Dr. Gray earned his doctorate from Azusa Pacific University, his Master's in Teaching, and his Bachelor's from the University of California, Irvine. He has hit the ground running. He's done already a tremendous amount of work. He has a great skill set around teaching and learning and assessment and accountability. And so, our goal this year, and I'll continue to speak to this, is getting more and more kids to grade level and beyond, and he's the right person to help us get there. So, Dr. Gray, welcome, and come on up and say a few words.
I asked Mr. Stein not to set the bar too high, but that didn't really work. So, good evening, President Youngblood, trustees, Dr. Churnus, and executive cabinet members. As you know, I was able to join the Ed Services team last week to prepare for and co-facilitate our principal retreat that we had in this very room on Monday. And it was a wonderful day for me to get to meet our school site leaders and spend time setting the tone for where we want to go as a district. I'm happy to share that in the short time I've been here, I've already been welcomed into the PYL family, and I'm humbled and honored and tremendously excited to be a part of the PYL family. Do you want to thank my family, my wife, for being here? This is her first and last board meeting. So, just very excited to accomplish great things together. So, thank you.
Next, we have our new principal for Wagner Elementary School, Kylene Fenema. And we're really excited to have Kylene join us with six years of experience as an Assistant Principal, most recently in Albert. Prior to her time as an administrator, she worked closely with educators and as an instructional coach. She was a classroom teacher in Kinder 1st, 4th, and 4th grade for many years, and her experience has allowed her opportunity to work with many different communities. She earned her Master's in Ed Leadership with a Focus on Technology from San Diego State University, her Bachelor's in Elementary Education from the University of Oklahoma. And we look forward to seeing great things as she leads the Wagner Wildcats. She also lives in the community and has kids that, you know, go to our school, so this is really exciting to have her join. And they're here. All right. So, Kylene, come on up and say a few words. Congratulations.
Well, first, I have to say thank you so much to the executive cabinet, to Superintendent Churnus, to President Youngblood, to the board. I just cannot explain to the level that my heart is just full of gratitude and joy right now. I know that this district is so steeped in a tradition of excellence and support for everybody, and this is actually, the schools are the reason why my family moved here a year ago, and I've gotten to see the schools from the parent side of things. And now that I'm in the employee side of things, I can tell that this isn't accidental. There's so much going on behind the scenes. Everyone is so supportive, so welcoming, and I am excited to join the Wagner family. So, I just say thank you so much. I'm excited to join this community, and go Wildcats.
We have a few more new folks I'd like to introduce. Our new Glenview Elementary Principal, Vidi Fragga. Vidi's no stranger to PYL. She served as the Assistant Principal at Valdez Middle School in Placentia for the past two years, and she's done a fabulous job there. And prior to that, she was a Middle School Assistant Principal in Menifee Union School District and an elementary educational specialist for the San Jacinto Unified School District. She prides herself on being the first in her family to attend and graduate from university, having earned her Master's in Education and Bachelor's with a minor in Special Ed and Spanish from Chico State University. She's fluent in Spanish, which will definitely help at Glenview, and she has three children, some of which happen to be attending a dual immersion program in their home district, similar to that of Glenview. So, hey, we need the students, so start working on your kids. We're confident in her ability to lead Glenview, including the school's robust dual language academy there. So, I'd love to have you come up if you can, roll on up here and say a few words.
I'd like to take this opportunity just to say thank you. I am just so thrilled to have this opportunity, and I'm just excited to start leading and supporting the Glenview community, and I got to say, go Bulldogs! Thank you.
And finally, our new principal at Rose Drive is Tricia Gray. And Tricia's also a longtime educator and administrator here in PYL, having served as, most recently, as the Assistant Principal at Tines Elementary School for the last four years. Her career in education began 25 years ago in East Whittier City School District as a 1st, 2nd, and 5th grade teacher, and before she became an administrator in PYL, Tricia served as a School Interventionist Specialist, where she ran an intervention program for struggling students, supported the school and parent workshops, offered teacher training and support, and served as an administrative designee. She's earned her Master's in Education with a Reading Specialist credential from Cal State Fullerton, and her Bachelor's in Sociology from UCSB. Go Gauchos! And it's safe to say she'll bring a wealth of knowledge and experience to lead the Rose Drive campus. I'd love to invite you up, Tricia, to say a few words.
Good evening, President Youngblood, trustees, Dr. Churnus, and the executive cabinet. I am so excited to be joining Rose Drive as the principal. I know that that community is tight-knit community, just really comes together for the benefit of the students, and I can't wait to be a part of it. I look forward to continuing that mission that is established at Rose Drive in preparing all students to successfully meet the challenges of the future and become true 21st century learners. Thank you for entrusting me with this responsibility. I look forward to it. It's going to be a great year, and I have to say, go Roadrunners!
Moving right along, we have been busy this summer, and so I just want to take an opportunity to let the board know and the folks here what we've been doing. It's typically for school districts, one of the busiest times of the year, and so I want to thank our Executive Director, Brad Runge, for completing all these projects. Some of the projects that we've done this summer, preparation for our dual immersion program at Bernardo, roofing projects at seven of our sites, exterior painting at Valencia, field renovations at nine of our sites, new playground installations, classroom wall installations, a front lobby restroom remodel at Travis, preparation of the new preschool programs at Bryan and Wagner, restroom remodels at Fairmont, Eldorado High School, Esperanza High School, and Tuffery, kitchen and food service improvements at Esperanza High School and Tuffery Middle School, tennis court resurfacing and repairs, asphalt projects at seven sites, new flooring and fire alarm system upgrades at various sites, installation of new scoreboards at Eldorado and Valencia High Schools, classroom ceiling tile replacements district-wide, a deep cleaning at all schools, and we are just really grateful for our team for working so hard while the students are away, so when they come back, they come back to great facilities. So, thank you to our facilities department. Next, as many of you have seen, we've been sending out, I've been sending out a Monday message every two weeks. So, we started this back in mid-May. I launched a new bi-weekly newsletter called the Monday Message, and we share it with families and staff. We'll continue to do that. It's to personalize a message for me, often from our school board president, and talk about things going on in our district. And so, the feedback's been overwhelmingly positive. The last edition, we got over 30,000 views. So, we're really getting the word out and communicating with our folks, and we'll continue that this year. And with that, in the next Monday message that will come out in a few weeks, we'll be starting the superintendent committees. And so, I'll be hosting four community advisory committees to discuss district's plans, to allow parents and guardians to, opportunity for feedback, to connect with me. They'll be via Zoom in the evening, so parents that are working can still come and attend. And there'll be four. There'll be an elementary school parent committee, a middle school parent committee, a high school parent committee, and a special education parent committee. I'd love to have up to two board members on each of these, and so we'll be getting the board information on that, and we'll be sending out applications in this Monday message for community members to apply and join the committee, and that concludes my report.
Awesome. Thank you, Dr. Churnus. What an addition. Holy cow! I look forward to seeing all that progress, so, welcome. Okay. This brings us to our public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for the public to provide an input to the Board of Education. During the public comment period, board members do not dialogue with the speakers or make comments regarding information shared. Each speaker will have three minutes. We have 10 speakers wishing to speak tonight, so that's three minutes. I will ask that speakers repeat their name when they come up to the podium, please, and that kind of gives us a little heads up. And I will call the first four speakers. Please sit in the front row and be ready to go. Okay? All right. Our first one, Jenny Bermer, Paula Powers, Andy Falco, and Brittany Rayner. Jenny, you'll be first. Or I think we're using the center one. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Youngblood, it's Jenny Breber with an B-R-E-M-E-R. Thank you. I first want to personally thank the board for your unanimous decision to make naloxone available at all of our campuses. This action demonstrates commitment to the health and well-being of our students, and for that, I sincerely thank you. However, I'd like to address a concern that's been on the minds of many educators and staff, including myself. While having naloxone accessible is a crucial step forward, we find ourselves in a situation where teachers and staff are unaware of its precise location on campus and uncertain who is trained to administer this effectively. This knowledge gap is something we must address urgently to ensure that this life-saving intervention can be utilized swiftly and efficiently when the need arises. In light of this, I urge the school board to provide voluntary training for teachers and staff in administering naloxone. Just as we ensure that all staff members are well-versed in using fire extinguishers and defibrillators, we should strive to make naloxone equally accessible and understood. There should be naloxone included in the emergency backpacks in every classroom. It's little. This is what it looks like. I have it in my purse at all times. I have a friend just last week in our community that saved somebody by having this in her purse. Allow me to draw your attention to a successful precedent for this approach at Esperanza High School, the Learn From Morgan Program. This initiative, born out of a tragedy after the loss of a student, has equipped our students and staff with the vital skills of CPR. Let us not wait for another heartbreaking incident to spur us into action. I implore the school board to seize this opportunity to ensure that naloxone is as readily available as any other life-saving tools within our schools. Together, we can make a difference, protect our students, and truly embody the values of care and compassion that our educational institutions should stand for. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Ooh, that's loud. Good evening. As we begin a new year, I'd like to share some concerns that I have as a mom of a PYL student. First, it concerns me that many hard-working professionals are leaving our district. Not so long ago, we were considered a destination district that attracted talented leaders and kept good people for years because they loved and were invested in our community. Parents sought out this district not only for its high achievement record, but because of its family feel. I am broken-hearted to hear that talented people are looking to leave because the tone here has drastically changed. I hope that those of you that are new to PYLUSD see the value in our community and take time to nurture this family. Another concern of mine is the board's consideration of leaving the California School Board Association. No board member has explained specifically the reason for this and what plans are in place to fill the gap in guidance, or what liabilities will be incurred once we no longer have access to membership services. According to the CSBA website, the goal of its membership is to inspire our members to be knowledgeable leaders, extraordinary governance practitioners, and ardent advocates for all students. I cannot see any justification or benefit for not being a knowledgeable leader or an ardent advocate for our students. Our educators are expected to be trained on a variety of topics each year. Why wouldn't we expect the same for our board members? Our kids deserve trained trustees that understand the expectations of the job and seek support offered on a range of topics provided by CSBA. As John F. Kennedy wrote, "Leadership and learning are indispensable to each other." In conclusion, I'd like to wish each teacher a relaxing final few weeks of summer. Please ignore the negative noise you hear, and know the overwhelming majority of families in our communities support and appreciate you. We are excited to see you soon and are thankful for your knowledge, dedication, and inspiration. Thank you.
Why is everybody leaving? They must have heard. Hello. About three or four years ago or so, I attended my first school board meeting with my wife, and it was her and I and maybe two or three other people. And we began to hear some things that were going on in the school district, and we're a little surprised and a little bit shocked, and in some ways, we were, some of our thoughts about what was going on here were confirmed. So then, I began to televise and livestream the board meetings before they had cameras inside here, and more people became a little bit concerned as they heard what was going on at the school board meetings. And so, over the last several years and in between, I've been threatened to be arrested for trespassing once when I was here and a number of other things. And so, to say it's been a little bit of a rough road as we've gone through the last few years here at PYLUSD is probably not telling the whole story. But, the parents behind me that continue to come, that continue to contact me and other people in the community, we began to rally, and I think what we're seeing today is the results of parents being involved and people really looking at what we could do. really looking at what we could do in this school district, that maybe some people have just become stale in their jobs here. I'm not sure exactly how to explain some of the things that were going on. But I can tell you, today is one of the proudest days that I've had. And I wasn't going to come today because I have five kids that are in the school district. We had quite a lot still to do this summer. But I'm glad I came because I see that every parent that was involved in helping with the elections for the school board members that are currently on, to the superintendents and the changes that have been made, I am so pleased and so happy and so excited to see what's going to be happening in the school district going forward. It's not to say that at times, we did not have a great history here and probably some amazing teachers, and we still do. But I always knew we could do better. And I always knew that some of the things that were going on just shouldn't be happening. And I've been excited to hear about the things that have been happening throughout the summer and some of the changes and the new faces that we're seeing. Very excited, Olivia, to see you there. I've been meaning to email you and say congratulations, but I'm glad to see that you are up there and not sitting over here any longer. One other thing I want to talk about that's unrelated to that, but thank you so much for all of your hard work. I drive around now because, again, I have so many kids that are in the school district. I can see the schools look brighter. Some of them are getting paint, and things look fantastic. The only thing I want to say before I leave is that there's a, we have to do something about the cost of sports. It's incredible. I have two girls in cheerleading at Eldorado, and I have one son at lacrosse. School hasn't started yet, and my wife and I have spent thousands of dollars already in the school season, or the sport season hasn't even started. I don't know, we're blessed that we can afford to do what we can do now, but I don't know how many families out there, there's no way that they can be in sports. There's so many children being left out of sports, but they simply can't afford it. So we just really got to look at the cost behind all the sports. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Good evening. So after reading over some of the disputed items, I'm Brittany Rayner with C R L A. Sorry. After reading over some of the disputed items, I really wanted to focus on teacher evaluations. In a charter school, many aspects of the school are teacher-parent-and-student-led. Teachers will have a large voice in how their classrooms will run. With that being said, we will use the California Standards of Teaching Profession, also known as the CSTPs, in order to formally evaluate our teachers each year. Teachers will be given formal evaluations where they will choose one to three CSTPs that they feel they need or would like to grow in. They will also complete a form in which details standards being taught, practices used, and before the observation, the teacher will meet with the admin for a pre-observation meeting, where the teacher and the admin will discuss the reason for the goals, narrow down to one goal together, and then discuss how the teacher will accomplish the goal set. The admin and the teacher will review the lessons being submitted and will give any prefeedback on the goal chosen. They will add goals as necessary. Administration will then observe the lesson and add any comments based on the goal chosen. After the pre-observation meeting, admin will formally sit down and observe the lessons submitted, basing comments and strategies on the goal chosen. After the observation, there will be a reflection meeting where admin and the teacher will discuss from both sides how they feel the lesson was taught and review student work and see where they are working on growing their goals. Along with formal evaluations, there will be many informal evaluations where admin will be involved in walking through and participating in classrooms and student activities. There will be school-wide goals based on data collection that will be worked on throughout professional development in these observations as well. I truly believe in this model. I've been actively teaching it for the past 10 years, and I have seen countless students come in who were behind over two grade levels and rise and excel because they just needed something different. I have seen students come in who were behind, not just academically, but socially, and they thrive in this built-in leadership model. We are all here to do what's best for the students. And by saying yes today, you are providing an opportunity for student success in the community that most otherwise they would not be able to afford or find elsewhere. Thank you.
Okay, next four up, Gary Davis, Kristy Feldman, Shannie Murray, and Megan Muscol.
Hope I said that right. Good evening. Sorry for the confusion. I thought we might speak on around 16.1, so I'm sorry about that. But good evening, board president, members of the board. It's nice to see you all tonight. I have, well, three minutes to respond to a 21-page legal document that has just under 90 findings of fact. So I'm going to do my best to speak quickly. As you all know, we submitted a line-by-line response on Friday. I hope you all have had a chance to review it. So given the tight timeline I have, I really just want to focus on two things. First of all, what is classical education? If you read the staff report, it seems like there's some confusion about what classical education is and isn't, in that it asserts that your district currently offers classical education. What I want to say is that classical education is the education our founding fathers and mothers received. Although not as basic and old as that sounds, classical education is really about helping young people to achieve their full potential and to learn to love that which is good, true, and beautiful. Classical education utilizes the Trivium model of learning. The three phases of the Trivium are grammar, logic, and rhetoric. Classical education uses the Socratic method of teaching and of learning. Classical education relies heavily on the use of primary source documents and classical texts, using textbooks as a supplement to those documents as opposed to vice versa, which happens in traditional public education. Classical education is heavy on reading and writing for sure, especially in the beginning. But classical education also is all about math, science, and the arts. Our school will use the Franklin Covey Leader in Me program, which is how we're going to teach leadership by and large, including servant leadership. Our unique educational model of classical education and leadership taken together is unlike anything that P-Y-L has currently within the district. However, we do think it will complement you well, and we hope you are as excited about this offering to your community as we are. My second point is around facilities. We've identified six potential private facilities that we think could work for our school. The challenge is that until we are approved as a school, we can't enter into a lease. We can't submit a conditional use permit application to the city, which is what will be required for zoning and use. And so we're here tonight really sort of at a crossroads. And what I'll say is that if you approve us tonight, that process of getting a facility under contract and through the conditional use process and then building it out will probably take about a year, and we would open school in about a year. If we're denied tonight and we lose three months because we have to go to the County Board of Education for approval, I can guarantee you, we'll be standing here talking to you about a Prop 39 school district facility, just because we'll run out of time. So in closing, I would encourage you to review our line-by-line response to the district staff report. I think you'll see that staff is not correctly interpreting the law. They're asking for things that aren't required by law. In some cases, they missed what's in our petition. So anyway, our track record's strong, and we hope that you'll approve us tonight.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. I'm Kristy Feldman. I'm happy to be here representing California Republic Leadership Academy. I am an attorney from Young Mini and Core. Our office represents more than half the charter schools in the state, and we are happy to be here with C R L A tonight. We have reviewed the petition and the statutory findings. As Mr. Davis said, C R L A submitted a detailed response to each staff finding, so I'll kind of be summarizing the legal issues here. I'm sure you've read and considered that response. So ultimately, the law is clear. It is the intent of the California State Legislature that charter schools become an integral part of the California education system. And they, there is a presumption in favor of approval of charter schools, and they can only be denied if you make one of eight statutory findings. And each of those statutory findings must be supported by factual findings. The staff has chosen four of these legal findings to try to pursue. Unfortunately, their suggested findings are based largely on speculation, on misinterpretation of the law, erroneous readings of the charter petition, as Mr. Davis suggested. Sometimes they just missed things that were in fact included. In our petition, the, but the vast majority of those findings simply ask the charter school to have submitted information that is not required under the law. The law is clear that we have to provide a, that the school has to provide a brief description of 15 items, and certain things like an address for a facility, for obvious reasons, are not included in those. So there are some specifics that just go beyond the legal requirements that were requested in those findings. As Mr. Davis indicated, there was a lot, there were several findings based upon attempting to establish duplication of district programs, but ultimately, there's not a single school in P-Y-L U S D that can offer this special type of programming that C R L A is offering to your students and students in the neighborhood. So we, I just want to stress and request your careful consideration. We believe it would be an abuse of discretion for the board to base denial upon the flawed findings submitted by the staff. The presumption is for approval, and C R L A would be an asset to this community and its children.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Murray?
Hi, my name is Shannie Murray. Two quick comments. One, please vote to accept the staff report on the charter petition, which concludes that the charter presents an unsound educational program. It says the superintendent recommends that the board deny the petition, and I hope you do so. And even if they appeal, I hope, I think that more people will pay attention to the Orange County Board of Education if it tries to approve a charter that the staff, superintendent, and all five board members don't support, and that's in addition to the almost 800 community members who signed my petition to deny the C R L A charter. Let's send a strong message that we here in P-Y-L want to prioritize local students and protect our district resources. And number two, I just want to say that I support C S B A membership. The C S B A is such a strong advocate for public education. I think it provides important leadership and training, gives guidance on legal compliance to avoid costly lawsuits, and helps amplify P-Y-L's voice at the state level. I hope you maintain this valuable resource. Thank you.
Hello, Megan Muscol. I just wanted to say really quickly that I also requested the board vote to accept the staff recommendation to deny the charter petition from C R L A for all of the reasons that have been mentioned in the staff reports. This also is not the first staff report to review a petition from C R L A, but actually the third, and the third to suggest denial. San Juan Capistrato denied, and actually overall denied, which is what resulted in the O C board petition. The petition at the board, the staff also recommended that it be denied, and the board overturned it. I hope that you will read and take seriously the staff report and the comments within. What I found in my readings of all of the petitions and all of the staff reports is that there have been inconsistencies between the applications and responses to applications that have been made in response to staff reports that in later staff reports have been admitted by the petitioners to not be things that they intend to follow through on. Specifically with STIRS and the pension programs, that was a specific response to a staff report and recommendation that in order to approve, they consider the pensioning and retirement programs for the teachers. Their response was that they would, and they included in the application. And then in our staff report, it was revealed in the interview that they did not plan to follow through with STIRS. In the San Juan Capistrato report, they also admitted to plagiarizing parts of the application from Ivy League websites. They're unfamiliar with the existing district offerings. This has been consistent throughout the staff recommendations. For instance, my daughter has taken Latin at Golden Elementary in our district in the fifth grade, like Latin is offered here. You can get exposure to Latin, as well as several other foreign languages, not just Latin. The representation on C R L A's board is homogeneous at best, although I do appreciate them removing the references to the alcoholic preferences of one of their board members from the original application. Their proposed administrative staff in at least two out of the three applications have not even met their own stated staffing requirements, respective to their principals, who were required to have certain certificates. And a quick search of publicly accessible databases indicated that they did not. And there have not been significant improvements from the first application to the third. I also agree with everything Paula mentioned in her public comment regarding C S B A. I'm concerned about what alternatives to the support and programs provided by C S B A are proposed as alternatives. Thank you all for your time.
Okay, our last two speakers are Denise with no last name and Anton D.
My name is Anton D. The absolute conservative chicanery being presented by Leandra Blades, Todd Frazier, and Sean Youngblood today is shocking. It took days of digging, sitting through podcasts and reading transcripts for me to factually state to you that the transferring of your school district to the CPC is a financial and societal danger that only they benefit from. For starters, the CPC has openly stated their anti-union stance through their outspoken opinion against bills that would support teachers and members of the board here and their ability to defend themselves from truly forced political curriculum, like the so-sweetly-named "traditional" curriculum. Now, while some of you were attending C S B A meetings, Leandra Blades and Sean Youngblood have been attending the CPC training instead. This training is brought to them by the membership organization CLEO, an offshoot of CPC. I cannot stress to you enough the backwards logic of this association. They advocate for the freedom to harass teachers to the point of threats. They wish to weaken the power of the teachers' union in the school boards, and they seek the control of the information given to schools under the guise of hypersexualization, see their statements on Bills 1078, 1352, and 596, which I have thoroughly read during my investigation. Not only does the CPC make radical and baseless claims like how critical race theory is really Marxist propaganda, see the Critical Race Theory segment of the home website, but nowhere do they provide resources, information of curriculums or faculty information of future bills like the C S B A does. Your school district would be hemorrhaging staff as your leaders then learn that they have not only been stripped of their union support, as they are cast into the dark while other districts wonder what happened to P-Y-L U S D. But now must abide by an organization that doesn't even inform its members of basic skills unless they enroll in a subscription-based course of 15 classes hid behind a $9 paywall that I paid for and listened to. The CPC is a political sham group that is being placed in front of you as a worthy alternative to the union that spans the entire state by Leandra Blades, Sean Youngblood, and Todd Frazier. And quite frankly, it is an insult to the intelligence of the board and those beneath them. The CPC's presentation of fear-mongering without basis or statistics is a red flag that even if they support both political sides, their unprofessional behavior is inexcusable.
I'm Denise May. Not just Denise, like Cher, I have a last name. I guess I didn't write it. I just want to speak about C S B A following that. But C S B A, all the districts in the state are members of C S B A, or a good majority of them, because it offers training. It offers training for board members. Most of you have not been in a classroom. You're not teachers. You haven't been staff in schools. So you don't understand what's happening in the classroom and how C S B A helps support that. And that's why C S B A is important for you to attend those trainings. It lets you know about curriculum, about the laws, and it advocates for all students. And as people who have not been teachers, principals, admin, even, you know, support staff, you guys don't quite understand the importance of that training and having a program that advocates for all staff and students. And so I hope that you guys will think about C S B A and not remove us from C S B A. It is an important tool that every school district uses. It is an important tool that every school district uses to keep everybody current and safe, and keep our students safe. And that's all I wanted to speak to. Thank you.
This brings us to our communications and board report. And we'll go ahead and start down at the end again. Trustee Buck, when you're ready.
Sure, thank you. Well, there's not a lot I have to report. Really, the only thing that has been going on lately is North Orange County ROP had their annual in-service this last week, and their keynote speaker was Carlos Whitaker, who was wonderful. He's the author of Moment Maker, and he came and talked a lot about the different moments that you can capture, that you can, that you can save, and that you can have a difference with everybody. It's really based on a relationship. So moments with students, moments with colleagues, moments with family. So the North Orange County ROP theme this year is raving moments and to create raving moments for students and for staff. So the staff was charged at the in-service with creating and claiming those moments and celebrating and elevating all of the students. In addition, I had a wonderful trip this summer. I got to travel around the Midwest and traveled from Detroit all the way down to New Orleans. And I just wanted to highlight, I stopped at the Civil Rights Museum in Memphis, Tennessee, and they had a wonderful exhibit on the Brown Act, and even Mendez, and a lot about education. So if you're ever in Memphis, I encourage you to go to the Civil Rights Museum. It's right there at the site where Martin Luther King was assassinated. There's so much information. It was incredibly impressive, but I would encourage you all to go to that. And as was mentioned, the schools are looking beautiful, and I just want to point that out as well and thank all of the staff that are out there doing all of that hard work over the summer. Some of us are taking those trips and are on vacation, and our students are regrouping for the year, and teachers are getting ready. They're going to come into amazing, amazing classrooms and to their sites. You'll see as, I don't know if we'll actually mention it or pull it, but we've had a lot of projectors and screens that have been replaced this last year, and so it really will be a new place for some of those students that haven't had those screens yet. We had a few last year, but this year, from what I'm understanding, they're all done. Congratulations to all the staff doing that. That's an immense amount of work, but thank you for getting the school ready, and I'm looking forward to September. That's it for me.
Good evening, everybody. My report is also short. First, I'd like to welcome all of our new administrators that were highlighted today. Many of them left, so hopefully they'll rewind and watch it online, and I know I'm very excited to get to know them and build relationships with them as we work to improve the education for our scholars. I would like to, in conjunction to that, thank our Human Resource Department for all their hard work in getting our schools up and running for our scholars on August 29th. Reading my reports, you guys have not had a break, and I just thank you guys so much for making sure everything is in place. I'm sure you guys make a big difference. I also want to thank our facility and maintenance team for all their hard work getting our schools ready. I have had a personal evolution or time thing of watching Valencia High School get painted and updated almost on a daily basis, and I'm like, I really like the black. I don't, I never thought I would. I thought it was, you know, a blue school, but I'm kind of liking the black and the blue. And I know that that is a tremendous amount of work to organize and to get through, and it's just everything from, you know, black tops to roofs, you know, landscaping, cleaning, everything. It's just amazing, and all the hard work that goes into the schools during the summer. So thank you, maintenance and facilities. And I'm looking forward to the symposium on Thursday. And before the end, I'd like to publicly thank Mr. Giordano for his tenure here at PYL. He has served us very well and kept us financially stable, and helped guide us through a lot of difficult negotiations and different things that we've had to do, and especially for the refinancing of our bonds. Thank you for that, that big savings. And on a personal level, he's been really gracious to open up his office to me every time I have a weird question, and we sit with the books and he explains it to me at my level. So, good luck. And I just wish you the well on your next adventures, and you will be missed. Thank you.
All right, I'll see if I can be shorter than both of you. The summer's been busy for my family. We've got three kids that are all in sports at Esperanza, so it has been from one basketball tournament at Valencia, where we see all the painting and stuff going on, to football practice, and girls' flag football, which if you did not know, we have girls' flag football at all four high schools, which is pretty exciting, first year, CIF sport, so go support your girls' flag football teams, especially Esperanza. Can I say that up here? It's just been good to see the way that adding athletics really integrates multiple students that wouldn't have otherwise engaged. We've got a lot of softball players, we've got a lot of non-athletes, and we've got football players, well, now they're football players, basketball players and things. It's just, it's neat to see that. I love athletics as being able to promote student connection and just everything that comes along with that. So that's really great. Then I just attended a meeting with Carrie and Leandra at Eldorado about the lights project, and it was the questions that were asked and answered, I think, are, is the information that we were looking for. The thing that I sensed, and I've said it several times up here, that I think is a theme, a negative theme here in the district, is accountability. There's a lot of times that we say that we'll do a thing, whether it's locking a gate or keeping people off a field at a certain time, or turning lights off when they're supposed to be off, we don't do it, or at least we don't follow up well enough where the community feels like we're actually paying attention. So that's one of the things, as we go through many different items, that we, I want to make sure that we are held, we hold ourselves accountable, that we do the things for the community that we say we're going to do, and that we, first and foremost, support the students, because that's what this is all about, and making sure that everything that we do causes our students to leave here better than they came in. So, that's all I got. Was it shorter?
Mine will be short as well. I was able to go to a conference in Napa for the California Association of Black School Educators. I was joined by Dr. Gates. We sat in a lot of meetings, a lot of breakout rooms, and we got a lot of great information. There were some fun activities that we had after, and I don't know if we want to compare bowling scores tonight, but we can. We had a great time, we met a lot of great people, and I think too, even like, you know, when you're in the, when you're in the room and you're, you know, have those presentations, you really gain a lot, but I think what you really gain more is when you're able to go out and talk and be in the breakout rooms and the stuff that you do after, and that's where the real conversations happen. And so I think we have found some lifelong friends and people who want to partner alongside of us, and so that was a really exciting thing for us to experience, and we're looking forward to the future conferences for the California Association of Black School Educators. I'm looking forward to the State of the School District on Thursday. Very excited. I know there's a lot of community members that are coming, there's a lot of, I believe the police chiefs are coming, we have some council members coming, and so it will be a big deal, and I'm really glad that we're showcasing what our district has to offer and where we want to take our district into the future. I also attended the town hall at Eldorado about the lights and listened to the presentation, and I agree with Todd about the accountability aspect. We need to, in order to go forward in a lot of these projects, we need to make sure that we are accountable to the community and to the, you know, the surrounding community too, as we continue to do these things. And I think, up until now, we have not been great about the schedule, and, you know, things have maybe gone past or after hours, and so I really feel in the future, we really need to do what's right and make sure that we are accountable, not only to our staff, but also to the community. And I think too, that that could also bring up the Civic Center Act, and the Civic Center Act is about our outside users. And so we have some fields that are not supposed to be used, and we have, some of our fields aren't supposed to be used at all, and then some of our fields are rented out to outside users. So if your child is part of, you know, say that one of the high school sports, then that field is obviously with them and the coach, that's accessible to you. But our outside users, such as travel ball teams, club teams, Friday Night Lights, the AFL, those things, those have to be rented out through our district facility. And so if we see people that are using the fields, we need to report that, because that is disrupting the community around there. If people aren't supposed to be on the field, not only does that hold the district accountable for any type of injuries, because we don't know these people are on their fields, and so, but it also too, that is about accountability, and it's about accountability to the neighbors that live in the areas. If somebody's not supposed to be accessing a field at all, and they're out there on a Sunday, that's not right for the community, it's not right for the district, because it opens up to so much liability. So I think in the future, we really are looking for a lot more accountability, and I think too, also gaining the trust of the community by doing so. And so that is all I have. I'm really looking forward to this upcoming school year. I'm super, super excited about everybody up here, everybody out there. I know that yesterday, we had a lot of great feedback from the principal's leadership meeting that was in here. They said, a lot of them came away and said that they are so excited, and this is like one of the best meetings that they've ever attended in the district, and they have a clear plan going forward. So I'd really like to thank our entire team and everyone that's been working so hard to push this mission forward, and I really appreciate it, and I know the teachers that are excited. Everyone's really looking forward to this next school year and to where our district is going, and I'm really looking forward to Thursday to hearing more about it and the excitement that that's going to cause. So, thank you so much, and let's look forward to a great school year.
Okay, that was kind of a lot for some people that didn't do anything this summer, right? Okay, so I just want to reiterate what my colleagues are also saying. It feels like our district is like a coiled spring right now. We're ready for these student scholars to come in, we've got teachers and administrators that are just busting their tails trying to get themselves ready for this upcoming year, and I just want to wish them the best this year. I am so looking forward to just the outstanding things that are going to happen, so I am very positive with just the new staff that we have, the new faces, that's going to be amazing. Next year, we're going to be coming back around this time and going, wow, you know, that was an incredible year. So, I also want to thank Mr. Giordano. I will be missing him. He's guided us through several situations with a good, clear understanding for us. He's so well spoken and makes it easily understandable for me especially, that I don't like numbers. So, good luck to you, sir. Other than that, I too am looking forward to the symposium on Thursday. This should be pretty incredible. I love the fact that we are having like a State of the District address. I think communication in part is going to just make everything work and flow better. So, good job, staff, and let's keep it going. Okay? With that said, let's go ahead and move on into our action items, action items. So I will need a motion. Does anyone need a break, restroom break or anything? You guys okay? Okay, all right, let's continue.
I'll make a motion that we, where are we on our?
Fifteen.
Fifteen point one. I don't have my regular language, so it's hard to... So I make a motion that we approve the district membership in the California School Boards Association and the California School Boards Association Legal, Education Legal Alliance for twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion made by Ms. Carrie Buck, seconded by Ms. Anderson. Let's get some comments, comments on this.
So the question that I asked at the end of our last meeting about this was, is there any rules about reentering if we decide that we don't do this? And the findings was that there is, we can reenter at any time if we realize that there is actually something that we're missing from that, based on the evaluation that we heard from staff and executive committee, that there is, most of the things that are provided by CSBA, we can handle ourselves as far as updates and all those things. Also, there's a lot of different places that you can get information these days, and it probably used to be more, CSBA was the only place to get that training and education, and so that's, I was glad to find that that was the information. Answer the question.
Well, I'll start. I am doing a little more research. I a hundred percent agree with the training. I think that the training is incredibly valuable. I've mentioned that before. I went through all of the training, it gives you a good foundation of what school districts really do. So I'm not going to go into all of that. You've also heard about why it's important that we participate and that we are members of the Delegate Assembly and try to impact what's happening in Sacramento by using our collective voices of five thousand board members across the state. But it really comes down to some money, and when you look at the benefits that we get for twenty-five thousand dollars to address the needs of our, to look at our bylaws, our policies, our, whatever, anyway, all of the different, resolution was the one I was looking for. So as a member of CSBA and GAMET, we have access to more than six hundred and fifty sample policies and regulations. Policy manual is updated four times a year, typically twenty to twenty-five individual policy updates, yielding approximately a hundred individual policy updates annually. Policy updates are made in direct response to changes in the law, and many of the policies include sample language options for adoption, giving districts flexibility to meet their own needs. CSBA is strictly limited to trustees and staff of the subscribing local education agency, so use of any CSBA-produced sample policy documents by non-sponsoring LEAs would be subject to copyright and licensing infringement, just as mentioned at our last board meeting, that we could just pull it from Orange County Board of Ed, or get it online, or on Twitter. So it doesn't work that way. That's intellectual property. Another point we've talked about is the cost. So for twenty-six, twenty-five thousand dollars, we currently now have, let's see, the six hundred and fifty, that's part, the six hundred and fifty policies that are part of that. So just our policies alone. In the last year, here's my number, we've had thirty-one policies that we've reviewed. So if you take the twenty-six, twenty-five thousand dollars and you divide it by the cost, that an average for our attorneys, so if they were to look at it, our partners, which is Mr. Huff that always reviews all of our things, his cost is three hundred and forty-five dollars an hour, associates are three hundred and five dollars an hour. So if you divide all of that out, thirty-one policies, and the dollar amount, you're looking at eighty-three hours a year for an associate, or seventy-two hours a year for Mr. Huff, which is two point eight, two point four hours per policy, or two point seven if you go with the lower rate, which is typically not what we do. We have David Huff look at it. So we would have to limit all of our policies to two point four hours. Once we go over that, we're already spending more than we would for CSBA, which is the CSBA membership as well as GAMET. And then when we talk about conferences, and that was a point that was brought up, the conferences are comparable. Seven hundred and fifty dollars for the CSBA conference, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars for the California Association of Black School Educators. Each of those nights that are about three days, and it's approximately same amount. So for two thousand dollars for each member, you can attend whatever conference you want. If I have any more notes. I think, oh, in addition, so all of our cities, except for Laguna Woods, are members of League of California Cities, which is very similar to California School Boards Association. It's a group that is run and organized by and for all of the elected city council members. CSBA is the same. CSBA is the same. It is elected school board members around the state. The Delegate Assembly is elected from those board members, from those particular regions. Marilyn, Leandra and I all put in our names to be a CSBA delegate and only I was elected. So we just have to spend more time getting involved and for people in Orange County to vote for people to be on CSBA. You have to be involved for them to know who you are. I think it's a, a shame that it appears like we're already pulling out of this. But at least for the money purposes, we're already going to be spending over. Just in this last year, from January to June twenty twenty-three, we've spent not to exceed four hundred and fifty dollars on our attorneys. We came back and for this next July twenty-three to July twenty, or June twenty-four, we've already approved another five hundred thousand dollars. I think that we will be overspending. If we approve this, I want all of the board policy work that is done by any of our attorneys to be documented and shared with the board. I'll be voting no. I mean, I'll be voting yes on this point.
Can you speak to, the, the comment about the attorneys reviewing? The attorneys have reviewed the policies, even the ones we get from CSBA. So I don't know that that actually is that much different. Are you suggesting that every policy is going to be created by an attorney?
They would have to be created by an attorney or we're taking intellectual property.
Intellectual property from who?
From CSBA and copyright.
If it comes from us?
If it comes from us, then we have to pay for it to have it built out. We can't just use theirs and copy it.
We wouldn't be using theirs though, that's not.
Right, but my point is, is it would take more than two hours for them to create something that, that, CSBA in general spend.
But in general, those don't have to be created by an attorney. They need to be reviewed by an attorney and all of our policies are reviewed by the attorneys. So that's not different.
Not sure that they all were reviewed before.
Okay, maybe not every single one.
And CSBA, just so you know, I mean, it, these are people that are hired by all of the members of CSBA, which are elected board members. They have two point six FTE solely doing policy research and writing and one point six FTE solely doing legal review. So there's no way unless we hire a full-time attorney that could do the work we do to make sure that we're, we're staying in line.
It is, are any of those policies brought through the state? Or is that all created by independent attorneys that are connected to CSBA? That seems to be strange to me.
I don't have the answer to that. I do know that most districts are members. And I, I, I think it's good for the board to consider the value and versus the cost. If we, if we don't join CSBA, then our staff will put a plan together to be able to have our policies updated and how we get that. I'm still not, I, I, I do have an issue with the fact that, you know, you have to join an organization if you're a school district to get policies updated. It's, it doesn't jive with me. This is a organization, they shouldn't be the gatekeepers of all education policy. So, you know.
We're welcome to create our own. This is because we're a member of this or the association.
I understand that, so I'd like to, I'd like to do more research on that because what happens is the, the, the education code is, is, is changed or created, right? And so then districts need to adjust their current policies. Oftentimes when we get CSBA policies, we're spending a lot of money with attorneys to make it ours anyway. So to say that, you know, now it's all on us, you know, to some degree, we're still spending legal fees on policies. And also, you know, there's, there's a county office that is funded to support us. Every county office gets a certain amount of money per student in the county to support school districts. So I think there's a structural issue with this. And county offices are funded to support school districts. And it shouldn't be predicated on whether we are part of an association if we can get updated policies for our kids. So, you know, I see value on both sides, but I do not think that districts that aren't part of this organization should all of a sudden be out of luck on updating their policies. So I think we need to have further conversations with the county and look at what districts are not part of CSBA and how do they access policies? Because there, there has to be a solution here. Because it just, to me, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be equitable for kids to be in a school district that just because their school board doesn't join this, you know, nonprofit organization, that the, the school board wouldn't be able to get updated policies.
And so isn't it, isn't quarterly, doesn't the state and the Department of Education, don't they come down and tell you what the new laws are and what the new policies are? And then you can establish the policies or you can write the policies for your own district? Because I know.
You know, I don't know. My experience is we get a stack of updated policies from CSBA. And, and we go through them and some of them we update and some of them we don't. And like I said, you know, most school districts are members. And so that's, that's how, what they rely on. And, you know, frankly, the service of CSBA from administrative standpoint depends who you get and who you call. Some are real responsive, some aren't. But this is really a board discussion. It impacts us on the policy side. It doesn't impact us on the online side because now we are online for our board meetings. Thanks to Annette, which I forgot to mention in my board updates, but I will mention here, she's did a great job. All of our board meetings are now online. There's so much more information for the community. That was a CSBA kind of added cost that we don't need. So it's really about, so you're, you're, you're paying for a voice in public education. So you got to figure what, you know, do you want that and does that benefit us? And you're paying for this policy piece that I believe deserves further inquiry on how districts can be supported on these policies.
I, my, my concern is that the CSBA is a lobbyist organization and they have lobbied against what parents want. And they have, some of their updates that I have read, it will actually go against a certain political party and disparage a political party. And so I think we should be keeping everything for the kids and about the kids and keeping politics out of it. And so my, my thing is, I don't see how you could pull, I don't see how you could deny a school district any type of policy changes. Because it is true, when some of these things have come down, there's like an example resolution or there's an example thing and then you still have to go through it and you still have to make it fit your whole thing. And I mean, and I know our staff here are very intelligent people and I don't think it's hard to write policy. Because I, I've actually for, for actually for the Police Department and Sheriff's Department, we used to write policy and we would shoot it up the ranks and get it approved, depending on what fit our needs. And so I, I think we should definitely be looking at other options because having a lot, like it's just exactly what Dr. Ternis says and what Todd said. To have a lobbyist firm, to have to pay an exorbitant amount of money to them just to gain policies and have them be a gatekeeper just doesn't seem, it doesn't seem like it's right. And how is that working actually for school board members and for students? And as far as the training goes too, I don't believe that we've asked, if I'm correct, to substitute this with any other type of training or any type of other organization. We've just simply said, let's pull out. And from what we were also told was we're free to attend any type of conference. So if a board member would like to attend the CSBA conference, they are free to do so. Just as if you want to go attend another conference, everyone is free to do so. And I think that that will make us a way more well-rounded board than for all of us to be hearing the same message. Because there's so many different groups and there's so many different messages out there. And so I think it would be better collaboration.
I've spoken to this issue many, many times and I am for a CSBA membership. Our legal fees have basically doubled this year, last school year alone. And then to add this on top of it, I think it's a bargain to spend the twenty-five thousand. We don't need to do the extra five thousand for the Educational Legal Alliance if we don't want to. But I think the basic membership is a really good value for our district. And we talk about how our staff is talented and they can write policy, which I agree they can. But I personally rather have them spending their time, energy and resources on our students. They are our first priority and that's where they should be spending their time and energy. And, you know, for them to spend a couple of hours trying to redo legal language and make sure it applies and, and talking to our attorneys, I think is a waste of their talents and their energy. And so I would prefer to stay with CSBA and utilize them. I value their training. You talk about how they're a lobbying firm. Yes, they lobby for laws, but I have never read, and I read, everyone can attest to this. I pretty much read everything, cover to cover. And I've never seen them disparage a political group. I've never seen anything like that. And every time I've gone to a training, I have seen them give examples, you know, like a liberal example and a conservative example. And then when I've gone and talked to the trainers and the trainees, you know, they're like, we're here to give you tools so that you can go forward and do what you want to do. This is not, we're not indoctrinating you, we're not telling you what to do, but you, you, this is how to get something done. This is how to write a resolution or this is how to make a difference in your school and impact. I think the conferences are really well done. You talked about how much you valued your time at your conference, Mrs. Blades, and about how not only did you learn in, but maybe more so out. And that's how I feel. Every time I've gone to CSBA, I have met friends, I have met people that are like-minded, that we communicate to this day on issues and how to strengthen. And that's what it is. It's about bringing a community together to better each one of us. And that is why I will be voting for this. I'm happy to take off the extra five thousand for the, the Legal Alliance Fund, but.
I would be agreeable to that as well.
And that, then it would be just twenty-five thousand.
Going back to hearing the same message, I don't hear the same message when I'm there. I get a variety of insights and perspective and voices. Even going to Delegate Assembly, we're, we're given questions where I'll even bring it back to the staff and say, here's the question they have, here's the information that I'd like you to, to pull so that I can represent our district specifically when we're going to talk about these things. They are not a lobbyist firm. They have a lobbyist that they use for and on behalf of school board members. And they get insight and information from school board members to make those, to make those, to have those discussions. And the trainers for CSBA are current and former board members, as well as some superintendents, but primarily former and current board members.
I'd just like to reiterate that if we find that there is a big gap that we're missing, we can always come back in. I don't think that any of the things that I've heard are confirmed. I think it's a lot of, maybe it's going to cost us more money and it might. And if it costs us a lot more money, then I think the value makes sense. But I'm, I, based on what Dr. Ternis and others have said, I don't feel like there's any gap that we can't cover and be within what's best for the students, so.
Just one last point. We have legislators in the state that the, the lump, the biggest chunk of the budget goes to schools. Legislators are constantly making laws related to education. We need somebody to be on it to make sure that we're complying, that we can push back, that we can have a voice to change things when needs to be changed and that will all be gone if we take this out.
But we can still do it to school board members, not as, not through the CSBA. We do that all of the time.
We can do that, but it's a lot bigger voice when you have thirty or five hundred or five thousand.
Okay. At this point, we're going to take a roll vote. So I'm going to start with you, Ms. Buck?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Fraser?
Nope.
Ms. Blades?
No.
And I will also be a no. The vote does not carry. Okay, moving on to a motion for fifteen point two, please.
That's irrelevant because we can't.
Doesn't matter.
Right.
All right, next portion. Going to Business Services, I'll need a motion for sixteen point one, please.
I will make a motion to adopt the recommendation in staff report on charter petitions submitted by California Republic Leadership Academy to deny petition to establish a new charter school for a five-year term beginning July first, twenty twenty-four and adopt recommended factual findings in staff report as basis for denial.
Second.
All right. Mr. Giardano, if you would.
All right, well, thank you and good evening. On April nineteenth of twenty twenty-three, the California Republic Leadership Academy, also known as CRLA, submitted a petition to the district to establish a new charter school within the district's boundaries for a five-year term beginning July first of twenty twenty-four. CRLA is proposing to serve three hundred and forty students in transitional kindergarten through the fifth grade during the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, which would be the school's first year of operation. CRLA is also proposing to expand its operations to serve a maximum of five hundred and eight students in transitional kindergarten through the eighth grade by the twenty-seven, twenty-eight school year. A charter petition is required to include information about a charter school's proposed educational program, finances, governance structure and operations, and about how the proposed school will meet all the requirements that are set forth in the Education Code. A petition to establish a new charter school may be denied if a potential charter authorizer makes written factual findings to establish any one of the eight specific criteria for, criteria for denial identified in Education Code Section forty-seven, six zero five subdivision C. Our district staff carefully reviewed CRLA's entire charter petition. The district also met with representatives from CRLA to better understand and clarify information in the charter petition. Based on staff's review and meeting with CRLA, staff recommends denial of CRLA's petition and included written factual findings to establish four of the eight criteria for denial presented in Education Code Section forty-seven, six zero five subdivision C. Specifically, staff determined that the petition presents an unsound educational program for the pupils to be enrolled in the charter school. The petitioners are demonstrably unlikely to successfully implement the program set forth in the petition. A petition does not contain reasonably comprehensive description of the fifteen required charter elements set forth in Education Code Section forty-seven, six zero five subdivision C five A through zero, excuse me, A through O. And the proposed charter school is demonstrably unlikely to serve the interests of the entire community in which the school is proposing to locate. A staff made multiple findings associated with each of these criteria, which are detailed in the staff's report. Accordingly, staff recommends the board adopt the staff report denying CRLA's charter petition and adopt factual findings in the staff's report as the basis for the denial. And that concludes staff's comments.
Thank you, sir. Comments?
Lot of work done, thank you. Lot of work done also in your response, appreciate that. There are several things that I read in the staff report that I felt were maybe reaching, but several things that I agree with that, that are a problem. I think some of the responses that we got back to them were that, well, it's, it's conjecture and it's, it's speculation. The entire concept of this is speculation because we don't have true data of an existing charter to actually go off of. So I, I feel like the responses in some of those areas where it's, this is all speculation. This is all how we analyze the data that we have. Not that we're guessing, but because we have data that we're going off of. I, I don't know that I have any other questions regarding this. I mean, I think the ADA was one of the ones that, kind of as we're looking forward financially, that was one of the ones that I really kind of hung on to to say, that's, that's a problem if it becomes a financial burden. And then again, the staff resources that I know we're going to have to dedicate to it. That's, there were, there were several things in the staff findings that I feel like were reason enough to not, to deny this, so.
So when I, I read everything and I had, you know, the same concerns as well, but I also feel like we need a better process than to have them petition districts. Like the Orange County Board of Education, who they say if it's denied, they're going to appeal to. The Orange County Board of Education, they have a whole slew of people who oversee charter schools. And so my question would be is, And so my question would be is, do we need to, like, relook at this process? Because I support school choice, I support charter schools. However, is it good for them to be coming to a district? And then we have all of these variables and all these things that we can't foresee, and it's a huge risk for a district to accept a petition. Whereas if you went straight to the Orange County Board of Education and you applied there, and they could help, you know, I was told too that they might even have access to funding to help you find a site and to maybe get you off the ground. And so I kind of feel like the whole system dealing with charter schools is flawed, and that there could be a better way. And while I, this whole process, it's been a very eye-opening thing with the OC Classical Academy and then also this. But I'm just wondering is if, are we actually doing right by charter schools by having them petition the districts? Or should it be done at a county level and have the county help them find, you know, the feasible locations? And help them out that way and skip the school district altogether and let the Orange County Board of Education, who have a huge staff that deals with charter schools, to oversee them? And so that's kind of out of this whole, this whole petition. This is kind of one of the things I've come up with is why are they giving it to the district? Is there a better way? And is there a better way for charter schools to get themselves established? And so that, that's just one of my comments.
I too looked at the, the information which the staff gave. I thought they were very thorough. They did bring up a lot of points in which I thought would leave the district open for some liability. I'm not saying that in the future that those things could not change to where we might be a better district having a charter in. But I personally don't think at this time, it is the time to do that. So with that said, I'm going to do another roll vote. Ms. Buck?
I vote yes to approve the... Did you want to say something?
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, my, I was worried about the financial cost to us, even with, you know, costing our district potentially 54 million. It's just, it's, it would really break our backs. And I also feel like they have a really unique concept. And then when asking them about, you know, details about it, they don't really have any working plan. So I hope that they get their new school off and figure out, you know, all these little details before trying to expand. There's just a lot of uncertainty, and there's not a lot of explanation about like what, how they're going to implement servant leadership and financial literacy. They're like, "We're going to work on that down the road," and I'm, and we're just focusing on classical. And I'm like, "I think we just need to take a pause and let them work out their, their system before adopting them, and then we're having to manage them when they're not solid-footed." We're not set up for that.
With that, your vote, Ms. Anderson?
It's a no.
Hold on.
So the petition is we adopt the recommendation that the staff denies.
That the staff, okay. So is that a yes? Okay. Mr. Frazier?
Yes, I adopt the staff recommendation.
Staff recommendation. Ms. Blades?
Yes, I adopt the staff recommendation.
And I too will adopt the staff recommendation. Okay, motion carries. Five oh. Next portion is Human Resources. I would like a motion, please, for 17.1.
I'll make a motion for the employment contract of Assistant Superintendent of Administrative Services pursuant to Government Code 54953. Approve the employment contract for Mr. Gary Stein as Assistant Superintendent of Administrative Services with an annual salary of $218,340. He shall also receive all incentives available to other members of the district's certificated, certificated management staff, including longevity pay and mileage stipend. The contract will remain in effect from August 22nd, 2023 through June 30th, 2025.
I'll second. Welcome to the district.
We look forward to working with you.
I'm excited about your, like, your technology background. That's going to be fun.
Okay, with that said, all of those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries five zero. Welcome on board. Okay, the next section is a consent calendar.
I, I, I hope I say this right on the consent. I have two things I'm going to pull. It was 21.39 and then 23.3. 21.39 and 23.3. No, that's very hard.
I like to pull 21.28.
I want to pull 21.4.
Ms. Buck, 21.4, okay. Okay, so we have 21.39. Oh, hold on, let me back up. I'll need a motion to approve the remainder of the...
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Ms. Blades, Ms. Buck, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries five oh. Okay, that's looked at these pulled items. Looks like 21.39 will be our first one. Or actually, I'm sorry, 21.28.
Or 21.4?
Or, uh, I was trying to do by the lowest. We are going with 21.39.
Okay.
There we go. There it is.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I'll make a motion to approve the renewed supplemental instructional materials for English Language Arts, English Language Development, and Mathematics with Curriculum Associates LLC for iReady for students in K6 for the 23-24 school year.
I'll second.
Okay.
And so a lot of people had, iReady has been a hot topic for the last couple of years. And while I support this new iReady in, in this form and the forms that are moving forward, I just wanted to be extremely transparent with the parents at home and the teachers and everyone who feels that they've been victimized by iReady or likes iReady. And I think we should listen to Dr. Young and have her explain what iReady will look forward in the future and why I'm on board.
Thank you, Ms. Blades. And so our staff did a wonderful job of really evaluating the usage of iReady to see where we were having high usage at our schools and at which grade levels, as well as we aligned our CASP preliminary scores with the iReady predictive scores to see where we were also aligned. And we were finding that there was good predictive value to the iReady diagnostics. And in hearing what the community's feedback was, particularly at the middle school level, as well as our site administration and teachers' feedback at the middle school level, coupled with our focus to increase our CASP scores and pivoting to using interim assessment blocks, we've made the decision to adjust our iReady quote and contract to utilize it at the elementary schools only in the diagnostic and instructional tools that are available. And at the middle schools, as well as the sixth grades at the elementary, we're looking at interim assessment blocks instead, which will provide the diagnostic value of iReady, but in a shorter assessment periods, which will represent a gain of instructional time for our teachers and be able to give them really drill down claim data to help them prepare for the Summit of CASP test. We also saw that our teachers were not utilizing the iReady toolbox by and far. And so the removal of that represented a cost savings of about $150,000 to the quote, as well as removing middle school from it. And so in total, there's a significant cost savings. But we'll still be able to utilize iReady in elementary for diagnostic assessments, as well as the instructional tools, so that teachers can continue to use it in small group instruction, during rotations, continue to use it effectively. But we will not be reinforcing any type of district mandated required minutes for the instructional tools moving forward.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, we've talked about it before. You have to have some sort of tool to collect the data because we're moving in the right direction. So I, I think that the way that you've set this up is great.
Okay. Any more comments on that particular one? Let's go ahead and take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five oh. Let's look at the next one of 23.3.
I'll make a motion to approve the Communicative Disorders Program Agreement with Cal State Fullerton from August 8th, 2023 to August 9th, 2026.
Is there a second? Oh, second, sorry. Sorry.
I got to get to my other page so I can make notes.
So, so again, while I am going, you know, obviously I'm going to vote, vote yes on this. I see that we have a ton of partnerships with Cal State Fullerton again. And so I was also wondering where we are with the student teachers because we welcome the student teachers back. It was unfortunate that Cal State Fullerton pulled their student teachers from the district, but I know our board is, you know, very open and would love to see Cal State Fullerton student teachers. And so are we somewhere near that? Because it seems like right now we are partnering with everybody but the student teachers at this time.
Thank you for that question. We are in open discussion with Cal State Fullerton regarding our continued partnership. I've, I've met with Cal State via phone and in person over the last few weeks and have a couple more scheduled conversations scheduled on the calendar with, with the dean. And so I'm hopeful because I know that we're all invested in our, in our students and we put in kids first. And so I would make hopeful that we can, we can have student teachers back on campus soon.
Very good. And so are they saying a reason why everybody but the student teachers are coming back? Because it seems like we're taking a lot of their students into our programs already. So I'm assuming that they know that we are very open to them and that we're very accepting and, and happy to have them.
I am working to make that extremely clear.
Thank you.
Just to piggyback on that a little bit, I've asked for a list of all schools that we get student teachers from. This will be my third request outside of Cal State Fullerton. Could I get a comprehensive list of that, please?
I believe I asked before Dr. Lopez departed for Claremont, he told me that there was 26 schools.
A list would be awesome.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's, there's some more comments on that. Let's go ahead and vote on that item, 23.3. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries five oh. Looks like 21.28. Already on it. Ms. Anderson?
I'll make a motion to approve item number 21.28, Meet the Masters.
Second.
And Ms. Buck, okay.
Okay, my comment on this is, basically, right now we're charging each school site. And they're having to raise these funds through PTA or use their site stipends to pay for Meet the Masters. And we're getting quite a bit of money for arts and music through the block grant and through Prop 28. And this is something, this program is something that I think would be a great start. And to make it equal through the district that all sites have the, all of our elementary sites have an opportunity to participate in Meet the Masters. So I'm just putting my plug in that that's what I would like, and...
I would second that. Meet the Masters is a great program. And we, I mean, we're going to have a lot of arts money that we're going to want to give back to the located, the students. So yeah, I would think that's a great idea.
Fits right in, and then it wouldn't be out of general funds.
Exactly.
And that changes budget. Things Dave's happy.
You take notes over there, Mr. Stein.
Excellent. Okay, if there are no more comments, let's go ahead and take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. All right, Ms. Buck, 21.4.
I'll make a motion, we approve independent contract agreement with Jenna Ross, Orange Circle Speech Services, provider of speech intervention and pathology evaluations.
I'll second.
My comment is this initially had an error, and I thought it was going to come back as a $20,000 error, but it's a $200,000, not error, but the error and where the comma was. And we have a couple of other, we've had some speech and, and language issues. So much so that we've pulled it in our negotiations and, in the past, and pulled out the speech and language pathologist as a, as a one-line item. And when I looked at that, it showed that I think the top mark that we can pay somebody in that capacity is $125,000. And now we're doing an independent contract for somebody, and I don't, I want to, I want to know for sure if this is one person for that $200,000.
Let's have our executive director come up, Ms. Gray. Right here is fine.
So, thank you for your question. It's actually for two and a half days for one contractor, four days for another contractor, and also a SLIPA and the supervision, so...
So what is that, all FTE?
It's quite expensive. It's about 1.25 FTE. So what I typically do is I will pad it because I know that we are down so many speech and language right now that if she has more, the owner of this agency, then we would go back to her. What's typically happened is I've come forward, as you all know, and I think, "Oh, we're going to get somebody from therapy, travelers who gives, what do you call it, temp services." And then they say they'll have two people. By the time we get it approved, the, the two people are gone. So you've approved many. I can give you the amounts that we've actually encumbered versus the amount you've approved, and it's typically maybe 10% of the approval amount. So we are trying to open contracts with as many as we can in order to get services. We're down eight speech and language pathologists currently. We have four, yeah.
Wow, okay, well, thank you.
And we have four that are covered, so...
That, that helps a lot. I was afraid that we were paying for one person for $200,000 for a 10-month contract. So I appreciate that, and I, thank you. That's it.
Okay, so it looked like it was just a misplaced decimal or comma?
Yeah, well, yeah, we were missing the zero at the end, and that makes a difference.
I, I thought it was a really great deal, 200 bucks, but... Okay. All right, any more comments? All right, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Okay, that brings us to our final segment. I go, I will need a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Excellent. We are adjourned at 7:59.